Okay, so then we'll go ahead and call the select board meeting for Wednesday, October 13th, 2021 to order. It's also a posted public forum for the special town meeting and also a posted finance committee meeting as well. So we're going to roll right into the public forum. And Carolyn or Randy, do you want to give a quick intro to when town meeting is? And
Sure. Sure, I can do that. So the special town meeting is October 16th outside at the public safety complex. Right now, my app says it's a 60% chance of rain. But we are looking at trying to get some additional covering. I think we'll be fine. And I'm very hopeful that we can hold the meeting on the 16th. So.
Hang on one second. I just want to make sure where we're actually recording. I don't see the recording light up there.
Recording in progress.
There we go. All right. All right, go ahead.
All right, I'll just repeat that, that the special town meeting is being held this Saturday at the public safety complex outdoors, and we're hopeful that it will not rain, but we are, we will do our best to make the accommodations so it's comfortable. So.
The intent of this forum is to provide information to the voters. It's intended as an overview and some context for the special town meetings that people are informed when it comes to voting on town meeting floor, improve the voter's understanding of individual warrant articles, and offer voters an opportunity to ask questions. We do the next slide. This is not intended to take any vote favorable or unfavorable, provide any group or individual the opportunity to advocate for or against any particular article. Yep, and that applies to all articles. So those are the basic ground rules, and let's get started.
Give us just a second, please.
No problem. Especially Carolyn has the first two articles, so she kind of needs to be.
Yeah, we probably should wait then.
David, are we actually all going to speak, or shall we just let Carolyn run through the articles instead of all the speaking?
I think they're divided out.
Well, they are divided out, but I'm just saying for the purpose of this informative meeting tonight, can it just be Carolyn? Or you presenting them, and then we can do it, whoever is designated at the town, excuse me, the town meeting itself, just to, in light of it all, just because we're not in front of people, just have somebody able to read it and go forward.
Yeah, no, if Carolyn's willing to do that, I'm happy to let her take it.
So I didn't hear any of that, so hold on.
You just volunteered by Joyce.
I got volunteered to what?
I suggested Carolyn that everybody, if you would be willing to just go through the town warrant, without all of us jumping in here and there, that you just run through it, since it is just informative, and then we would take, take it from there at town meeting itself and present our articles as designated. But in the light of just it being informative meeting tonight, can you just run through it yourself?
Yep, I'll do it as quickly as possible, and if, if anybody has a question, just, David, if it's okay, if they just speak up, otherwise I'll just keep moving forward. So I think, David, you read the, the intent of the forum?
Yeah, I covered all of that.
You covered all of that. Okay, can you go to the next one? Okay, so I'm going to go over the general fund budget. So if you can go to that table, Jennifer. Okay, so these are just adjustments to the FY '22 budget. So I am going to briefly explain those, and this is where if there's any questions, please ask. But I mentioned, I think, at the past several select board meetings, the need for there to be additional clerical support for a few of the higher level boards in the sense that require a lot more administrative assistance. So there's money allocated for that, as well as some increased support to some of the departments that need some assistance with posting minutes and doing things like that. So it's just providing that extra support that will keep us in line with the requirements of open meeting law and all of those expectations. If you go down to 132, I was very pleased that the finance committee recommended increasing our reserve fund to $100,000. So that's, that's great. The town accountant, if you remember, when our, we were contracting out with one of our accounting employees, who was working on her own as a consultant, but we were using her as well as Malanson. And they, we knew this was going to happen, but when Mary, who is the accountant that we were getting services from, when she chose to go back to work, she is now working for Malanson, who is the company we use. So this is a combined, it's now they're both working for the same company. It's a great communication. It's, it's a really great situation for the town, but it is an additional cost to that contract with Malanson. So that's what that increase is. Police and highway, these are, I'll go over highway first. These are, we made a change for the ditch support. That was at capital request, but we felt it was more appropriate as, and capital, the capital committee agreed, as well as the finance committee agreed, that ditch funding really should be an ongoing expense in the operating this portion of the budget. So that is in there. As well as the police, this was a really great opportunity that Chief Mike Mason brought to our attention about the option of leasing a new vehicle versus purchasing. And so this is a lease that is obviously starting halfway through the year, but as, as many leases, you don't have to pay the first three months. So they, that $7,500 may not even occur this year, but we felt it was important to put it in there. The building inspection salaries, that is specifically for, we were having DeeDee, the administrative person in that office, was doing work for building inspections, but it was coming out of the planning department. At one point, she was able to do both, but the building has gotten so busy with inspections that she is in there. That's her primary role. So this is just using that money, and it will be the buildings, that building inspector salaries will go up $2,000. Let's see, Linda's going to go over, I did want to, the conservation commission, 171, that is, as you know, we have a new agent, but it is more costly, and that is what the additional support is going to cost for this year. So I'm going to have Linda, if there's any questions, are there any questions? Okay, I'm going to have Linda, the treasurer, go over most of, the rest of this budget, 710 and 919, and then she is going to go into the enterprise funds as well.
Okay, so because we had a nice free cash figure, which we'll go over later, we'll add money to, that we could put into the budget again. And because we also did not want to, the capital planning committee did not want to take any capital articles to debt exclusion, the finance committee approved of increasing the amount that we pay off in principle within the levy by another $50,000, and that allowed the capital to expand a bit and put, move that item up in the, in the capital budget and help us stay ahead of our borrowing without having to increase taxes with debt exclusion. And the OPEB, this is, this always seems to be the first one on the chopping block, but fortunately, we have funded it enough times so that we do have a healthy balance, and we're on our way. Our report just came in this week. The OPEB report, it's like, it's a, I consider it an audit, they call it something else, but and the select board, you'll be receiving that soon, that we are, we are still doing well. With that, however, it is a moving target, always up, of course. So we are going to need, we're going to work harder at getting that reinstated fully for '23, but for '22, for fiscal '22, there was an agreement that we increase it by, we put $50,000 towards the OPEB so that we start getting back in the swing of funding that item. So that's it on the general fund. The total increase is $187,440. And what's next, Jennifer? The, oh, so this is the fun, I'm sorry, this is our funding on the, on the, what we just did. Our new funding, our original funding was lower by that amount of whatever I said, 187,000. And 187,440. And the way we're funding it was a bit more free cash, but mostly, as you can see, using the ARPA revenue replacement funds. So that's going to work out, that's going to work out well for us. We have benefited from, from ARPA in this way, and the revenue replacement funds are mainly from our losses in hotel, motel, and meals tax, which we're happy to say are really coming back well in the first quarter of FY '22, but we don't know how it's going to go. So our revenue replacement calculation is based on this past year versus two years ago. So that's our loss, that's the loss that we experienced this past year, which we're able to apply to the budget. So that's the only change there.
Did you want, did you want, where are we? Did you want to speak on the stabilization fund that was in that area also, so that we can just let people know?
We will, we will get there, sure. Last year, we funded the $530,000 for, to fund our FY '21 budget, and this year, we don't need to fund stabilization. So we will have free cash, we'll go over balances. I think they're coming up in a couple of slides. So we'll show how, because we had a nice amount of free cash, we were able to put the money back into stabilization, and that's a later article also on this warrant.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
No, that, no, that's fine. It's a good thing to raise now, because it's glaring right there, showing that we used $530,000. So we are going to put that back this year. We also used $300,000 the year before, and we were able to put that, most of that back as well. So so far, we are, we're coming out of the, we're coming out pretty well, so we're just hoping this continues. We're not, nobody knows for sure how we're going to go, so we're still going to be somewhat cautious. But sure, thank you.
Yeah.
Next. Okay, so there are no changes to the sewer water or Hadley Media budgets. However, there's change to the funding, based again on a reduced revenues that we experienced in '21. We are not going to use F, we're not using ARPA money on, on the, on funding the enterprise funds, because we don't think we're going to need it. But right now, we had to, in order to balance it in the paperwork we filed with the state, we had to reduce the projected revenues based on our '21 actual revenues. And so in order to compensate for that, we had to, the rest is going to be spent out of water and sewer and Hadley Media reserves money. But again, if our revenues come back the way we actually think they may, then we won't be using those reserves either. So, but this was, there's no change to those budgets. This is just a funding change. Next. Okay, so these are the fund balances that we're going into town meeting with. As we said, the free cash really came in very well. There's a few, we are, the actual amount is 1,358,505. Our general stabilization fund is 1,317,919, the goal being 2 million. 2 million or higher in that account. CPA funds are, before going into this meeting, probably a little higher, because I'm a month behind in the revenues, changing this figure, but it's to about 2,261,549. Water reserves, as of June 30th, were certified at 1,272,255. Sewer reserves were certified at 524,351, and Hadley Media reserves were, were certified at 210,072. So we see we have enough in those enterprise fund reserves to, to put into the budget funding, and then see how we go for this year. Are there any more questions, or you want any more explanation on that? Anyone? Okay, I will be prepared to answer questions on, on those fund balances at town meeting if that comes up. So I think I'm done. Back to Carolyn.
So Article 3 is just the previous article, a previous year did not cover the whole cost of the signs. So this is just bringing, I think it's 375, to be able to cover the cost of all those signs. Next one. So these articles are just returning money that's unspent back to its original source. Do you want me to go over each one? No? Okay. Next one, Jennifer. So these are all the capital articles. The funding for these requests will include borrowing within the levy and from water, sewer, and Hadley and Media reserves. So I know that each department head is here who's requested capital. It's up to you. I was hoping that you would give them the opportunity to briefly describe each one, so if anyone had questions, would that be all right to do, David, Joyce?
They're all here. Let them have a chance to discuss.
That sounds good.
Okay, Chris, did you want to talk about the DPW Highway? You can actually address all of the articles.
Again? Got you? Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Jennifer, the next slide will show the articles.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I begin with the highway drum or roller for asphalt. We have an existing one that is, we are not able to get adequate parts. It's been over 22 years, and so we also, so we're requesting for this for the past two or three term meetings, to be able to have the ability to use a compactor in our roadwork. And so that's what we are requesting, that's the DPW Highway drum asphalt roller. We're also, we're also asking for two F-350 dump trucks. The roller is the first one on, on your left. And then we have dump trucks, and we were, initially, we were asking for 550, but understanding the budget and the constraints, we decided to go with F-350. We have 2001, 2008, and the 1997 truck. And all, for now, we've been putting a lot of money in them in terms of repairs. The 1997 truck has been twice, the transmission and the motor has been replaced. It is, it has no more enough transmission power to even use it as a plow truck. The 2001 and 2008, same, same thing in terms of, so we requested that instead of the town giving us 550, we'll go with 350, be able to do the job in terms of plant street, if a 12-month truck. Also, it will reduce our cost of repairs. So that the three items that the, we're asking for. We did ask for a bigger truck, which could have cost $300,000. It's a, it's a big truck with wing plow, replacing our existing one. But we, we, again, because of the budget and the financial restraint, we felt that we should be able to manage that truck for another year or two. We also requested for funds for the gas pumps, but that also has been put off because of fiscal situations. So we are very grateful, and we are asking that if we can be given this roller and a two F-350 for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chris, do you want to hit the sewer pipelining and repairs and the hydrant as well?
Yes, the sewer pipe, we have a couple of sewer mains, and because of the age, we have cracks, we have leakage. And we have a lot of interference with the sewer, outside water coming in. And because of their locations and the depth, we, it became obvious that we had to do some repairs. And so the, the repairs, we are asking for the pipeline in. Is we put in another pipe or some sleeve, very thin layer inside. It's a way to, to have another long-term use of those sewer mains, and also to prevent the leakage. Whenever a pipe is cracked because of either tree roots or because of the movement of the earth, it's very expensive. And also, when we do our report to the EPA, every so often, we, the, the amount of water that comes to the sewer, into the sewer plant, we have to, what we call RNI, we have to also declare that. And so this repair will help us to keep our sewer pipes for many, many more years. The hydrant replacement is also part of our safety and the EP requirements. So we are changing most of our hydrants, and we have many valves that are needed to be replaced. So we, we, we take, we frequently come in, ask for these funds every year. We, we focus on one part of town, and then we go to the next. Hydrant is very, the ability to make sure that the fire department has the ability to get water. Safety is of utmost priority for us, and so these funds will give us the ability to do that.
Okay, Mike Mason, do you want to talk about the PCs and the equipment?
Certainly. I can talk about the PCs, and I can do the next one as well, because the fire chief was unable to be here tonight. So I'm going to be covering for him on those. He will be able to explain them at town meeting, hopefully with more justice than I can do it tonight. As far as the, the PCs, as many people know, we write a state 911 grant every single year to the tune of $30,000 or $40,000, which allows us to replace any kind of computer or any IT equipment that we need that has to do with our communications half of our, of our building. What it does not cover is PCs, computers and related equipment for the, anything outside of dispatch. We are on about a five-year replacement cycle. We're a little outside of that replacement cycle. We're at six or so years. We have replaced a few computers as kind of a one-off, so we don't need to replace all of them, but these are the quotes that we got recently from our IT folks for what we do need to replace. The good thing about this is that this capital request is actually in here as a precaution, because I recently wrote a community compact IT grant to the tune of about $142,000 or so, which hopefully, if we are awarded it, will cover computers for town hall, computers and some IT equipment for the schools, computers for the public safety complex, and updating of our telephone system, and also it will cover some licensing software that both the fire department and DPW need. And it's also going to cover actually some computers at Council on Aging and DPW. So it's kind of a townwide thing, which I think will hopefully give us the best chance of getting it. So I'm pretty hopeful that we're going to get that, and then this article will not be necessary. So that's my hope, and that's the explanation for that. I think if we get this grant, it will also be able to remove future capital articles, which would be coming up from several of those other town departments that would be requesting things for the future. So hopefully, that'll be a big win for us. As far as the next item, this one is for public safety in general, police, fire, and dispatch. As many of you also probably know, we have been having some problems lately with our radio system. We are at a point where there is certain equipment within our radio system which is obsolete. They're called voters. I don't know much about it, but what I can tell you is that they don't make these products any longer, and if we, if this portion of the radio system goes down, we will be relegated to using telephones. And we are also in a, in a situation where we think that this is part of the reason why we're having so many communication issues. It's becoming a safety issue. And this is a part of the project, and it is the part of the project that is the most. It was done, we submitted this with care and knowing that there's other departments that require this, this funding, but we also submitted it knowing that this is the, this is the part of the project that needs to get done first and right now. There's other parts of it, which we're going to be talking about, hopefully, within an operational budget cycle, which will go through, obviously, the other, the other processes, but that's what that 199 is for. It's something that is desperately needed. We have to, we have to replace these, these parts of the radio. That's it.
Thanks, Mike. And then if Drew's on, Drew typically has this amount each capital request, but I was, I can't see the whole view here if Drew is on. So Amy, you went through this list so well when it was presented to finance. Was there details, and I apologize, I don't have the details for the Hadley Media Reserve request.
No worry. There wasn't any, we didn't really get into too many details, just because it's a standard thing that they do, and they take it right out of the Hadley Media Reserves. So it's, it's, we didn't really get too detailed on this.
Okay, great. All right, are there any questions about any of those?
Can, can you just say what the total amount of all articles were going, oh, you do do that, or borrow?
625. In the motion, it goes into details.
Okay. All right.
But it shows it on the funding source as well.
Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure people knew the amount, and it was all going to be borrowing, so. And if anybody had, if we were going to borrow all this in all past or whatever, could we have some scenarios on what the amount would be on the tax?
Joyce, this, none of this is going to be, is going to add to the tax. We have a certain amount of, one of our budgets is the debt and interest payment, and when we have an override, that's included in, in there, and we raise taxes to pay for what, for the additional amount. It's a debt exclusion, and that's why we often, that's why, when we go to the ballot box to vote on whether we're going to get a truck or a fire engine or another capital item, that actually increases the taxes. The borrowing within the levy means that we have, that means within, within, within our budget. It's basically within our budget without adding to taxes. So our, the portion of our debt and interest that is attributable to borrowing within the levy is about 300 and, well, it's been about 300,000. It was lower, it was increased to 300 a couple of years ago, and just today with the adding, or, or this meeting, with adding 50,000, we now are up to about 350,000. And the amounts that are within the levy on here are within that total. Let's see, 354,954 dollars. This will be paid where, within the budget, just like another budget article, there will not be.
That's good. I, I knew what it was, but I, yeah, but people read it or see within the levy, they don't always know what that is, so thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, I, I understand. I'm glad you asked, because I was trying to think of whether to jump in and explain that or not, because I think that's, it's important to say. Yeah, I I understand. I'm glad you asked because I was trying to think of whether to jump in and and explain that or not, because I think that's uh it's important to say. And uh for the borrowing within the water, for the water and sewer reserves, we could actually have enough money to move it over. But again, we don't know what's going to happen with uh with income and uh revenue in those areas. So we thought the safest thing to do is to borrow it and pay those back over five, over five years. And that way that would reduce the amount that we're spending out of reserves. And um so that's how we're doing out. The only one that's a straight transfer is the Hadley Media Reserves because they don't have a uh a borrowing.
Okay, sounds good, Linda. Thank you.
Sure.
I have a curiosity question for Chris Okafor. In the hydrant valve replacement, how many hydrants do you figure you can do in a sixty thousand dollar piece?
You're muted, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the the sixty thousand dollars, uh, the reason why we we would, we go that that way is because of in-house, we try to do um instead of um asking for more money and bringing a contractor. We we we, so to answer the question, it would, we'll be able to do um somewhere between six and ten hydrants and valves within that sixty thousand.
And how many hydrants does Hadley have? I mean, this seems like a little teeny number.
Uh, because most of our hydrants are not in danger. So that's just why it's not that um we uh our hydrants um um, ma- majority of the hydrants are in good shape. So we don't necessarily have to change all of them. And that's just why most of these are old, old ones and probably some toward the dead ends that have not been at the, what we tend to do, change more for add valves.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So our article five two is to amend a previous special town meeting article in two thousand nineteen, which borrowed thirty thousand dollars to repair the D P W gas pumps. We would like to uh redirect those funds to decommission the D P W cap gas pumps that we have now. Um, as Chris mentioned before, there was a request request to replace them, um, but it was a significant cost. So we are looking at other options, um, and but at some point, these gas pumps that are in the ground right now um, would have to be de- uh decommissioned. So that is that request to to reuse that money. That's already been borrowed for.
I would like to ask a question on that, please. Um, so apparently the current gas pumps are not in a condition that is worth fixing them. Is that correct?
Yes, it's extremely expensive to fix.
Okay, so does it sounds to me like ultimately we will not have gas pumps at the D P W?
Not necessarily, no. Uh, we we have other options. We can certainly go to fleet cards. Um, some towns do that, but we are looking at other options. Um, but right now, regardless, those pumps, whether we um go to town meeting to get uh at the annual town meeting, if that is, is that it looks like that's a request that's needed. Um, at the annual town meeting, we're still going to have to decommission these pumps. So we felt like that, um, we're not confident that it's Chris, you maybe explain in more detail what happens in the warmer weather with these gas pumps.
Yes, um, and in the warmer weather, we have um, we have a vapor lock whereby we are not able to um, because of vapor and because of the type of um equipment we have, which is uh a crazy situation where we have uh five, sometimes five thousand, four thousand gallons in the ground, but we're not able to pump. And so uh every so often, we have to, um, recently we went to Pride uh to get some gas, including the police, the whole department. Or we calling for repairs and the cost of repairing, it keeps happening anytime the temperature goes up. So that's just why um that has been for the past two, three years, maybe happened of more often. So that has led to this situation where we are right now, vapor lock. And our our experts in have recommended that we have to uh think of either uh putting a new tank over uh above ground tanks or uh it'd be a waste of funds to to get a new pump without dealing with the tank uh with tanks on the ground.
Okay, I ju- I just think this is going to bring up a fair amount of questions at town meeting. That's why I'm asking, just so you guys can be prepared. I'm sure people are going to be concerned that we have no fuel for our, for our new vehicles. We're intending to buy, et cetera, et cetera.
No, I appreciate that, Randy, and we will be able to, we'll explain the different options that we're looking at. Um, and we do have, we we do have the ability to buy those fleet cards so that they can go to any gas station. We go out to bid. Um, this is what other communities do. Um, the the issue is that we are, we do have a contract, a regional contract where we per ma- made a commitment to purchase gas at a lower cost. So we still are, um, we still need to uh use these gas pumps as long as possible this year.
Right, and I think David posted, David Phil posted uh on Facebook some options of what is out there for us to do with this um, these gas tanks and things, which gives a uh a perspective of uh what's in need or what we need to do or what we can do. So there are a few options out there for us to look at um as we talk about this.
Yeah, one, couple of quick things on that. Uh, you know, Chris mentioned during the warm weather, we have issues, cold weather. Uh, during the winter, w- we don't have the vapor lock problem. So I believe we have a ten thousand gallon tank of diesel, a ten ga- thousand gallon tank of unleaded that are both underground. Uh, the diesel, not a problem with vapor lock, obviously. Diesel doesn't create vapors like unleaded does. Uh, but during the warmer months, uh, there's a big percentage that ten thousand gallons worth of fuel in the tank that we can't actually pump out of the ground um because of the vapor lock. So we've got basically money tied up underground that we can't access during warmer weather. Um, so that's an issue. The other issue is if the tanks do need to be replaced. Uh, our understanding is that D E P would most likely require those tanks to be above ground tanks due to their location versus underground tanks we currently have. And if you've been down to the D P W yard, you know that space is at a premium down there. And then so, you know, we've, we've got a lot to work out in this process before we decide whether we're going to put new above ground tanks or we're going to, you know, do some sort of repairs or if we're going to go to a fleet card, but we we have to you know, we have to think about all the options here before we move forward.
Sounds good. Further, further discussions.
So Article six is transferred to stabilization fund and this would transfer seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of free cash to that fund. Um, this really, the important thing here is this really turn the stabilization fund to previous levels and continue to follow the policies that the select board um would would like to pursue and has put in a policy. So um, I think, Joyce, this is probably a favorite article of yours, right?
Yes, absolutely. So, you know, eh eh, well, it is. I, you know, our stabilization is there for us to use as we need to use. And certainly if we have the opportunity and what a blessing right now that we've been able to um have that extra cash and stabilization uh and free cash um, that we can now bring that back up to the uh level that we like it to be. Uh, because that helps us with our triple A rating, but it also gives us a cushion. And that's our, that's our savings there, that if we need something, it's there. Um, so this is a great thing for us to have to do and, you know, what a landfall, you know, we that we've gotten for the for the cash. So um, thanks to whoever gave us the cash, because it sure does help.
This one is just a vote to accept ownership of the Goodwin Memorial Library from the trusts trustees of the Goodwin Memorial Library. Um, so that it can be used for general purposes. This was, uh, this never was officially done. It has to be done at town meeting. Once the library vacated the old library and moved into the new one, um, this is just a legality that needs to take place.
Is there history? Is there history on this? I I think most people would assume that the town owns the library now. So
Yeah, there was, yeah. There was an assumption. We found out about the uh the trustees were on the deed when Mass D O T went for right of ways and were taking property and um they sent us information um to be filled out. And the deed actually has, it's to the good, it's to the trustees of the Goodwin Library. So that's why we're doing it. I, we wouldn't have known about it, I think, unless M- Mast D O T was doing a widening project. So it was just a trigger and we thought we cleaned it up.
I get it. I knew it quite some time ago. I did a survey for V one vodka, the Saint John's. And I needed to look into the library and I saw that and I I was quite surprised.
All right, I didn't know if um members of C P A wanted to go over the next few articles.
Is anybody here from C P A?
I I am married there. I'd be glad to. Um, the first article up is the um Ganotic mural. This is really large. If it's hanging on a wall in the library, it's about a little over four feet by eleven feet. It was painted sixty five years ago by John Ganotic, um, who was a Hadley native, wonderful artist. And it's been donated by Ted Michakowski to the town, to the library to um be hung there. It has, um, the frame needs some work to be fixed and it needs to be restretched. There's some cleaning that needs to be done and repair work, and then they'll varnish it to help it last many years into the future. And it was painted right before the Hadley three hundredth and we made postcards out of it for the Hadley three fiftieth. So it's now hanging in the library and um this would, this is the amount that would be needed to really bring it, bring it completely up to snuff and to be enjoyed for years in the future.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Next. The pavilion at the Hadley Elementary School has been built with C P A funds and has now lighting. And and it has a one lone um picnic table in it. So these are funds to um get some, the picnic tables, and they've chosen some really nice um, nice picnic tables to put in there. So this is kind of to finish up the project that's um mostly done and and really has been funded with C P A dollars all along.
Mary, isn't this the one where you said the the dollar amount is not correct?
Well, they had, and I I pulled the sixty four hundred. They had asked for, they have money left over from the last request. Um, and they only needed about twenty five hundred, twenty five fifty three. Um, but we've been going back and forth a little bit and they're going to firm up the figures before Saturday. Um, it's probably better to ha- any extra money goes back to C P A if there's a little bit too much. So um Tim Nyheart's working on how much, they're waiting for a bill from the electrician. So how much is actually left over to make sure they have enough money? The picnic tables will cost sixty four hundred, but they shouldn't need all of it now. So I'm um, I'm not quite sure what what it, at the most, it'll be sixty four hundred.
All right. Well, as you said, whatever's left goes back, so it's not a huge deal.
Right. Next one, please. Um, the preservation of the columns at that town hall and the C P A committee um had already voted some money a few years ago, about thirty thousand. And that actually isn't enough to do both the restoration and the painting and and the municipal building committee is gearing up to getting the work done. So this thirty one thousand is what they say they'll need to do the entire job to repair the columns and then to be able to paint them after. This one um is for the Golden Court with the Emirates Hadley Athor- Housing Authority um has requested, the whole project is a lot more expensive. They get most of it paid for from um us, the state. And right in here, um, we're actually paying a small, this would be a small part of it. However, it would be about forty percent of it. Um, however, it is, you know, it's to replace one hundred thirty one windows at Golden Court plus their community room. This falls under the C P A because it's helping to preserve the the housing. And we don't put much, we haven't used the housing fund very much. Um, we've done some, the twenty five thousand for the rent assistance and then some small ones over the years. Um, so they came before us to ask us for the, the state part won't pay a hundred percent. So they requested the balance of the seventy five, seventy five thousand.
I I guess that was the question. I certainly have no problem uh expending the C P A because the majority of the residents uh from Hadley live um in the Golden Court. I think other people outside of us that know about this, they feel that um, Golden Court is a responsibility of the state. Um, so a lot of people have asked, well, how come we have to kick in money or whatever we have to do when things um happen over at Golden Court? And I, I, I think I'd like to have at least some explanation for people at town meeting of why we do this. I feel because we, you know, want to protect and and enhance our elders. Um, when they live at Golden Court, that would be my uh rationale of to why we do it. But is there any other thing of why, um, you know, statewide or whatever of of why they don't do it themselves and taking care of this project?
My understanding from what um the representative said was it's, it's, the state is paying a hundred and nine thousand and they don't pay a hundred percent. So they really rely on the housing authority to find local sources for um, for improvements like this. And they've been encouraging housing authorities to look at C P A funds. Um, and it's, it can't be used for everything. It can't be used for like redoing kitchens or redoing bathrooms. But it can be used for the protecting the building. Um, so the windows certainly help to protect the building.
I I think that might be one of the questions, why, what people might ask at town meeting. So it's always good to be prepared on why we kick in money because the state, as usual, doesn't pay the whole percentage. So we, you know, will also um be a part of that um money wise.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Next side, slide, please. Um, last year in June, the Hadley voters um voted to establish the Hadley Affordable Housing Trust. And um in there, in the bylaws for the Hadley Affordable Housing Trust, they talk about their ability to use C P A funds. Um, I may ask Bill Dwyer to to talk more about this if he would like to or or um somebody else. Because I think they'll, they'll be able to do it more thoroughly.
Sure, I'm happy to talk about it. So th- this is sort of quirky quirky area of state law where if you have a housing, affordable housing trust fund, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund can take operational control of the affordable housing set aside from the Community Preservation Act. Um, as Mary mentioned, this is a part of the C P A pot that has rarely been touched. And um it's an esoteric area of state law. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which at the moment consists of um, two representatives of the select board and five representatives of the planning board. Um, the initial setup of the trust fund was because we had been looking at affordable housing issues for several years. And we have some expertise in this area already. And having the funds in the hands of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund will allow for it to be deployed more quickly if an opportunity presents itself. Uh, there is nothing on the uh Uh, there is nothing on the uh, nothing out there now, but um the Affordable Housing Trust Fund can uh, can vote with support of the select board without having to wait for the next town meeting. If something comes up that requires quick action.
So what would be the difference between this fund and the last article we just looked at about the windows for Golden Court support? Would the Golden Court, should they be doing that again? Go now to the housing fund, to the uh Affordable Housing Trust, or would they still go to the town?
Well, there will still be uh over a hundred thousand dollars left with CPA in the Affordable Housing Set Aside. The money that would be transferred to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund could only be used in accordance with the CPA rules anyway. So it would provide um something like the Golden Court proposal theoretically could go either way. But if um the, let's say the affordable housing, let's say the CPA grant to the Golden Court renovations is approved. And this eventually goes, I'm not sure if it's gone out to bid yet, but if it did go out to bid and it was determined that the lowest responsible bid was actually twenty thousand dollars above what had been appropriated. The project would have to wait until spring town meeting to get more money presumably from CPA. Whereas it could come directly to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and we could act more expeditiously without having to wait till spring.
The balance in the um set aside for housing, the current balance is three hundred and eight thousand, so there still would be two hundred and eight thousand left in that set aside and any of the, of the two million, two hundred sixty-one thousand in the general, well, that's not all general fund, but there's a lot in the general fund. Can be used for any of the three categories, the historic, the housing or the recreation and open space. Um, so housing's not limited to three hundred and eight thousand, but that three hundred and eight thousand can only be used for housing. Any other questions on that?
Nope. Good job, Mary. Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
So Bill, since you're unmuted still, I hope, do you want to speak to this?
Uh, sure, hang on a sec. So this is primarily a housekeeping issue. This uh section seventeen is the Farmland Preservation Bylaw, which we also know as the Transfer of Development Rights Bylaw. And it broke the town into two districts, it basically, the idea was another way to fund preserve, land preservation. And the money that we collect by well, we, we, we have the ability by special permit to allow developments in the business district and the industrial district to proceed with less than the minimum required parking or uh with greater density if it appears that that would not be a problem, that there's, would be no adverse consequences from that. And in return, the business that is seeking the special permit makes a payment to the um uh to a fund according to a formula that is in the larger bylaw. And that is part of the source of the funding for uh purchase of the town's portion of APR uh restrictions. Anyway, that's a lot of background, but i- in the course of dealing with a uh project on the industrial, in the industrial district, but on South Maple Street, we realized that the wording uh of the receiving district, which originally said lots within the business and industrial zones with frontage on Russell Street or North Maple Street was inadequate. It left out areas of the business district that could benefit from using transfer development rights. And some, uh, since we adopted this about fifteen years ago, some of the some of the boundaries have changed. For instance, the industrial district on North Maple Street was intended to capture the uh Venture Way, what we now know as Venture Way, an industrial park. But because that was laid out as a subdivision road, many of the lots on Venture Way no longer have frontage on North Maple Street. So uh, we saw that there were just a lot of loose ends. It is a fifteen-plus-year-old bylaw. So we decided that we would clean it up by uh specifying that the receiving district would be all lots within business and industrial zones with frontage on a public way. They would still have to get a special permit, so this is not a blanket approval of density increases or parking reduction, it is just opening up the land area that can apply for the special permit.
Would they have to go to the ZBA bill or no?
Uh, the special permit is from the planning board.
Okay.
So they could come, i- if a project came in for site plan approval and they wanted to increase their density, we would take care of that simultaneously. One-stop shopping.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Then the mosquito control, this article will provide the town an opportunity to opt out of the mosquito spraying program provided by the state. This was a commitment the select board made in the spring to put this on the special town meeting warrant.
And that's it?
That's it.
Perfect.
Thank you, Jennifer, for putting that PowerPoint together and um.
Excuse me, are you taking any comments or questions?
Yeah, sure, I, I thought we, the questions were gonna happen when we went through each article, so I'm sorry.
Bobby, you're muted.
Okay, now I'm unmuted. Okay. Um, my name is Bobby Cayman or Robert Cayman, I'm a resident eighty-five Mount Road, uh, uh, Mount Winnebago in Hadley.
I have a question about the mosquito control, I was uh, though, I uh was listening to the last select board meeting and a statement was made that um mosquito control does not harm honeybees. Um, that isn't totally accurate, it does harm them depending what kind of spraying and when it's done. Um, I read the state regulations and it says it's done between seven PM and on ten, uh, eight, four AM. And during that time, honeybees are out, they, particularly in this warm weather, they hover around the hive, they, they kind of hang out porch, front porch as such. And so the statement that it does not harm honeybees is not totally accurate. The spray they use, I've been reading up on it, Anvil ten plus ten on contact with honeybees can be damaging, so I would be careful with a statement such as that.
The, the statement came directly from MDR itself.
Hey, everybody, um, the ground rules we laid out is that this, there's no advocating for or against any of these articles.
Okay, I, I have one other question, I have a specific question that's not advocating or not. In making the recommendation, what has been the counsel, consultation or input on this most recently from the Board of Health in Hadley?
This is a town meeting warrant article that we put on uh, since we promised the uh during that discussion in the spring that we would bring it to town meeting.
Okay, let me be more specific, I'm sorry to interrupt, my, more specific in my question. I understand that the select board is going to make a recommendation not to opt out. And I want to know if making that recommendation consideration and discussion was held with the Board of Health, what, what was behind that um decision?
The Board of Health uh doesn't make this decision and actually part of the reason that also that the vote was, I believe, four to one to not opt out was because of the state denying uh just about everyone who has applied to the program, the ability to opt out of the program. So we can want to opt out as much as we want, the problem is the state is, I, I believe it was uh, D R, is that what it is, Amy? That uh.
Okay. It's the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources. They were the ones that um will essentially decide, so it's not, you know, we can say all that we want, you know, we want to opt out as a town, well, we don't really have the authority to do that. So the only ones that will be exempt if they did decide to spray would be certified organic farms. That would be the only ones that would.
I'm not going to discuss, argue this now because it's not the time, but I, I just read it a little differently, I'm reading on the MDR website. And it, it, the information is a little bit different than, than I, what I hear you say, so perhaps that discussion can be had at a later time. Thank you.
I, I think we're also, are we gonna be able to have that letter from the state from Joe Comfort had sent to us available for everybody at town meeting, can we attach that to the uh in your articles?
Yeah, I can cop, I, I can copy all of the information I have and make it available at town meeting.
Alright, I, I think that'll, well, I don't know if it's gonna satisfy every, everybody or whatever, but at least they'll have the information that we've received from DEP and from the state.
Yeah, somebody's gonna need to be very prepared to defend this or whatever, whatever is appropriate, but there's gonna be a lot of questions, I'm sure, so make sure somebody has, that, we have a knowledgeable person that can answer questions for this one, please.
And that's, and that's nobody, because
Yeah, it's.
I think that, you know, it's an open-ended uh conversation of whether or not you want your community to be sprayed for mosquitoes. And then we also have the state, on the other hand, telling us what we can do or can't do, whether we can opt out or cannot opt out. So we're gonna bring all the materials to the meeting and hopefully people can make that decision. It's not our decision as a select board, it will be the decision of the people and whether or not that's able to go through, we don't know, but we're going to at least present the facts that we should.
I, I appreciate that, Joyce, that's well said.
And Randy, I invite, I always invite um our legislators there and Senator Comfort is, Comfort, Senator Comfort is very a- aware of this, has been very involved with it, um if she's able to be there, she will certainly be able to provide a lot of information.
And, and certainly if our Board of Health wants to chime in on the uh mosquito spraying, I mean, we certainly welcome them to bring any materials or anything that they have to town meeting to uh help us uh make this decision. I'm, I'm more than welcome, I'm happy to have them come and, and present their uh sides to this.
Yeah, the Ha- the Hadley Board of Health, we, I spoke to the select board when this issue first came up, the Hadley Board of Health uh voted to support the opt-out.
Okay.
Measure.
Would you speak to that, Susan, at town meeting?
Uh, sure.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you. So then people would have that um side of that also, so that would be good.
Anybody else out there that wanted to ask, uh, I saw a hand on Gary's iPhone, is that, was that a question, Gary?
I see Michelle Morris Friedman's hand is up.
Uh, okay.
Andy, you talk.
Oh, hi, actually, it's Andy, I'm the one who has a question. I'm just a little confused about the warrant article and what we're voting on. So a yes vote on this article means you want the town to opt out of mosquito spraying. And a no vote means you want the town to do the spraying if the state offers it.
Yes.
And, and when it gets to that point, if the state decides that we are in a high risk or a medium risk elevation, then whether you opt out or not, the state will spray and will notify everyone.
Right, I, I understand. So yes vote means no spraying and a no vote means yes to spray.
Yes. That's very confusing, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the town meeting warrant articles? Alright. Well, that's it for that, um, so we will close the public forum for the special town meeting. And then uh Amy, is, does finance have anything for the rest of the meeting or do you guys wanna uh close the your portion of the meeting as well?
We don't have anything else, so we can close our portion as well, please.
Alright, well, thanks Finance Committee uh members for joining us.
So David, could, could you just say time and place once more for everybody?
Uh, Carolyn, do you wanna do that so I don't get the wrong?
It's this Saturday, October sixteenth, at the Public Safety Complex, um, outside at eleven.
East Street.
East Street, yes.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, so uh John is here, um, now that we're in the actual select board meeting portion, uh Jane Evan Smith, David Phil, Joyce Chunglo, Amy Parsons and John Muskevitz are all here and all votes will be taken via roll call. Uh, let's hit the three point one consent agenda, we have warrants AP two-two-one-four V, AP two-two-one-four S, AP two-two-one-four, AP two-two-one-three, AP two-two-one-three S and PR two-two-zero-seven, we have minutes from May twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Joyce, second by Jane. Anything on this? Uh, Jennifer, roll call, please.
Roll call field?
Yes.
Evan Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Muskevitz?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm going to jump down to five point one because I see the person, uh Liam from Kestrel has been here quite some time. Liam, are you still, you ready to go with this?
Hi there, sorry, yes, I'm ready to go.
Alright, great. So Kestrel is uh requesting that we designate a portion of the Hadley reservoir land as part of the Robert Frost Trail system. So I will let, Liam, I'll let you kind of describe what you're trying to do and what you're asking for.
Yeah, sure, so I can just share my screen to show the map, but just as background, um the Robert Frost Trail's been around since the early nineteen eighties. And it currently runs from the Notch Visitor Center in Amherst up to Wendell State Forest and originally the intent was to have the trail continue through the Western Holyoke Range. So Kestrel Land Trust um in collaboration with DCR has selected a route on existing trails essentially, we originally liked the idea of building this trail that had been scouted by the people who created the trail, but DCR didn't want new trails built. So this is the route in orange that we ended up settling on and as you can see, it passes through some of the reservoir lands, so namely this parcel here. And then I think it enters Amherst College land and then two more parcels before staying on DCR land for the rest of the route. So essentially, these trails already exist, um and what we're asking for is to designate them as part of the Robert Frost Trail. So that's the project in a nutshell.
And one of the questions I had asked um, the person that originally contacted me was this designation won't interfere with any of the other approved recreational conservation uses for that property, correct?
Correct, yeah, all uses like, including mountain biking and any allowed uses are not gonna cease on this trail. It's just gonna be part of this larger route.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Alright, motion by Joyce, second by Jane. All right, motion by Joyce, second by Jane. Any other discussion on this?
Does that go across any private land? I see there's a budding property there.
So it does cross uh Amherst College land. That that was the. I can share my screen again. And then there's also a Peckham Industries, which is also John Lane and Son. That's the. Parcel that the New England Trail goes up Bear Mountain on as well. So that's the one in red. And the R F T does cross private land on other parts of the corridor, which kind of was done in a handshake agreement, but. Except for Amherst College and the quarry land here, it doesn't cross private land in this section.
Hey, anything else on that? Jennifer, roll call?
Roll call, David Phil?
Yes.
Evan Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes, I said.
Thank you. Um, Muskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Liam. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
You too. All right, so we'll go back up to uh four point one public comments. Uh, we're going to limit this to fifteen minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes each so that others may have an opportunity to speak. Um, anyone that's here for public comments, turn your camera on, wave at us, let you know you're here, let us know you're here. Michelle? Uh, you're you're muted.
I'm not ready with my question yet. I'm cross-referencing um the agenda on another device.
Okay.
Okay, there might be somebody else.
Okay. Anybody else here for public comment? Michelle, if it's okay, I'll come back to you in just a minute if you're not ready.
Andy has a question meantime.
Okay, go ahead, Andy.
Uh, hi. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um. I've recently uh submitted a letter of interest for the open at-large position at the Community Preservation Act Committee. And I just want to thank the Select Board for considering my application. Uh, I'm hoping to be back on the committee. Uh, I really believe strongly in the mission um and uh think I did good work while I was on it. So I'm hoping that you will give me a second opportunity to serve the town in this way. Thank you.
And and I'll say some of my comment now. I don't have the cross-referencing. The discussion about the vaccination, I would strongly urge you to have a separate meeting. And um deliberately invite the public, not have people having to go through the Select Board agenda. It's a. Question of concern to a lot of people in town. Um, and it is not something that's. Um, easy to know that's happening in advance. If you have to navigate through the website. To find the agenda, to find the item on it. So I would love to have that discussion with the whole Board of Health. The Select Board and any other board that's relevant to it with the public invited.
Okay. Um, I'll just real quickly hit on that. Uh, we have a due date from the state of tomorrow. That's why we're holding this today. Um, so uh unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of of putting this off uh to a later time. Um, so so we do need to do this tonight and hit everything that was required by the Attorney General.
Can you explain exactly what is due tomorrow? Because I thought there was an extension till October twenty-fifth. Uh, of our current COVID policies.
K P Law is here and I'll let him speak to that since he has better knowledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and I I don't know what you're talking about with respect to an extension, but no, the. Uh, A G's office gave us until the fourteenth to uh comply with the open meeting law or at least to revamp our agenda. And then revote and take a, do a rediscussion of our May twelfth uh meeting regarding a COVID update. So. What you've seen from the agenda, it went from COVID update to a significantly more uh detailed agenda. And the board tonight will discuss the same things that they discussed on May twelfth. Um, that will satisfy the A G uh with respect to additional discussions or the like. Uh, you know, that that's something that may or may not be taken up at another meeting.
Okay, so you do not have to make the decision about the vaccination tonight. You just have to discuss it in a public forum.
There has to be that discussion in the public forum, yes. And it and it would be along the same lines that we have that happened in on May twelfth. Essentially, what we are doing is a do-over of May twelfth after a more detailed posting of the agenda.
Okay.
Any other public comments? Last call.
There are some people who thought they might be here in a little while, so I don't know if they can raise their hand if they, because this is a short window here.
I mean, the meeting was posted to start at six. Um.
Right, but not everybody wanted to go through the town meeting warrant. Anyway, that's fine. I'll. No more questions for right now.
Okay, anybody else for public comment before I move on? Okay, uh, we'll go down to.
One more question, I'm sorry. Was the Board of Health invited to participate in this discussion?
Uh, the Board of Health, I believe, is here or was here.
Um.
Uh, she's gone now.
Yeah.
So. Okay. Um, we'll move down to um, let's see, to skip anything, we have six point two, Northampton Board of Health M O U. Uh, Carolyn, do you want to cover that real quick? Oh, says Dr. Moser will be here, but I don't see her.
Dr. Moser was here to discuss that.
Okay. Well, I'll skip that for now and we'll come back if she pops back on. Uh, we had a seven point one, single precinct. Do you want to talk about that?
So that is um, the the state requires that each town after the, I I think it's after the census. They they take a look at what your population is, based on the size of your community, whether you want to change the precinct. Um, Jessica would have more details, but it's basically the the recommendation is to remain one single precinct. Based on the size of this town, you have that option. So it's it was just, it's really a um kind of a housekeeping thing. Every single community had to reply. So you guys have to officially vote on remaining one precinct.
I'll make that motion for us to stay on one precinct.
Okay, so motion by Joyce, second by John. Any other discussion on remaining one, one place to vote in town? Okay, Jennifer?
Roll call, Phil?
Yes.
Evan Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Muskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you. It looks like Susan Mosler is coming right back.
Good. Dr. Moser, are you here?
I am now, yes.
Okay, uh, could you talk about the Northampton Board of Health M O U and what what we're trying to do there?
Yes. Uh, the state uh has had what's called the C T C. It's a contact tracing collaborative. Uh, and that uh uh organization has done all of our. COVID contact tracing uh work in Hadley, which is uh quite extensive, given all the businesses that we have. The state is shutting down the C T C. I believe uh it was supposed to be October first, but I think now it's as of the end of November. And they are wanting local governments, they're turning over all the contact tracing responsibility to local governments. Understanding that small towns like Hadley don't really have the capacity uh or wherewithal to do that type of work. Uh, they've uh encouraged uh collaborative agreements, you know, uh 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 across uh local municipalities. And uh Northampton applied for and received a large grant. Uh, they've hired three new public health. Uh, people and actually the state asked them to apply for more, so they're going to have even a fourth person. And they have assured me that they will be able to do all of our contact tracing. So uh, this is uh, you know, it's a win-win. It's it's a real plus for Hadley because we are responsible for getting it done. Yet we don't have the staff uh uh to do it.
Okay, so we're voting on the M O U so we can join with Northampton, right?
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the M O U with Northampton for the uh public health um to help us out.
How much is this going to cost, Susan?
I need a second.
Yeah.
Motion by Joyce, second by Amy. John, what was your question?
Uh, how much is this going to cost us, Susan, or is it all in the grant money?
It doesn't cost us anything.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this? All right, Jennifer?
Roll call, vote, Phil?
Yes.
Evan Smith? She said yes. Chunglo?
Yes.
Muskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, let's go down to. Uh, business not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance. Uh, EverSource Streetlights Letter of Intent. Um, a couple of years ago, we started looking at converting our streetlights to L E D. It was too expensive at the time, somewhere in the range of seventy-five thousand dollars to do. And obviously, we don't have just cash laying around to do that. Um, it looks like EverSource may have a grant or subsidy program available this year. If we can get this done by December thirty-first of this year, or we'll be able to. Uh, convert all our lights uh to L E D for the cost of around fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and based on our monthly charges for leasing our current one hundred and thirty-eight or one hundred and forty-two streetlights, depending on which list. You you look at, uh, the project would pay for itself in about seven months and and uh electricity savings and leasing savings. Um, not to mention being better for the world. So um. We are working on procurement for vendors who will be doing the conversion process. But as part of the process, EverSource would like uh. Us to sign a letter of intent that we are going down this road so they can start getting their paperwork in order. And like everything EverSource, it takes a while, so they they want this done A S A P. So what I'm asking for is if the board would give me uh permission to sign that letter of intent on behalf of the Select Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Joyce, second by Amy. Any other discussion on this?
Uh, in some of those streetlights, it's the ones in some of the municipal parking lots also?
There there are, yes. There's some, I believe, at the school. There's some, I know the one at Town Hall was already L E D. Uh, that we we had added at the back of Town Hall, but I believe there's a couple at the library. If not, I think the good one, there's one outside there.
And police station, how about those lights? Are those different?
I believe our town maintained already, not not leased from EverSource.
All right.
Okay, uh, Jennifer?
Roll call, vote, Phil?
Yes.
Evan Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Muskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me one moment. I I may not have been paying attention, but I thought I was. I think you had two motions on the table at once. You were started with the light thing. Somebody made a motion and a second, and then David, you. Asked for a motion and a second to allow you to sign it. Did the first motion go through?
No, there there was only one motion to uh allow me to sign the the letter.
Right, but wasn't there one to to start the whole process of, or was or was the whole intent just to get you to be able to sign?
Yeah, the the uh letter of intent does start the process.
Okay, all right, because I thought I heard you twice.
Yep. Uh, okay, so we'll go down to announcements here for the Bylaw Committee. Uh, Select Board is seeking members for the Bylaw Committee, Community Preservation Act Committee, and Cemetery Committee. Please submit your letters of interest to info@hadleyma.org. And I believe we are going to close those for the next meeting, correct, Jennifer?
Yes. Also, Historical has one opening too.
Okay, great. So if you're interested in any of those, send Jennifer an email and we'll get you on the list.
Thank you.
And then let's go back up to.
Wait, wait, we're in a little bit of a conflict on when that exact next meeting is going to take place before you. Say next meeting, so we aren't really scheduled for another meeting this month.
I think we're adding one.
Oh, you little devil, you. Is that a secret?
I think I'll go back to the minutes from last meeting when you said camping season was over and you want to have. Possible.
Yes, but we also, we also have Legion dinners coming up now, started.
I a- I asked him to do the twenty-seventh, not the twentieth, because I knew you wanted to go to the Legion dinner.
All right, you're safe, Jen.
I was protecting Dave there.
Oh, David, never mind me, just David.
I I was making sure you got to have meatloaf. I knew you wanted meatloaf.
Absolutely. Joni Suss goes in on that, absolutely.
All right, so we will go to uh under Old Business, seven point two, which will be the last uh item for tonight before executive session. And so seven point two is posted as COVID-nineteen policy update. And Jeff Blake is here from K P Law. So Jeff, can you? Give us a summary of what the A G said, what we're doing tonight, and uh, you know, we have some requirements we have to meet.
Yeah, sure, be happy to. Um, as as you know, I'm Jeff Blake from K P Law, your town council. Um, a a meeting for uh. To discuss a COVID-nineteen update was held on May twelfth. There was an open meeting law complaint that said that the agenda item that simply said COVID-nineteen update was woefully inadequate. Uh, the A G found that in fact the board had discussed a proposed vaccine uh vaccine policy. Which contained four key elements, um, whether the town would uh uh would not deny members of the public access. The public uh to the town property, meetings or events based upon vaccine status. And or whether it would require uh medical documentation of that status. Um, whether the town uh would require employees to be vaccinated. Whether the vaccination status would not have an impact on the ability of an individual uh individual to hold an elected or appointed position in town. And the town would not maintain copies of medical records of such vaccination records. Uh, during your discussion, apparently it was a twenty-minute discussion on the topic. Um, you were discussing the vaccine policy and you also discussed. The merits of the mandatory vaccination for participants in the so uh senior center recreational programs. The possibility that requiring COVID-nineteen vaccines would lead to requiring other subsequent vaccines in the future. The board's role in setting health policy uh vis a vis the Board of Health and state and federal guidelines. The so-called emergency authorization status of currently available vaccines. The prevalence of asymptomatic spread, uh medical autonomy and seeking to avoid implementing a potentially discriminatory policy. And of course, privacy and the and the HIPAA regulations. You uh ultimately voted to approve the policy. The A G found that the agenda item of saying simply COVID-nineteen update was not sufficient. And they found an open meeting law violation and requires us to uh go back through and essentially, as I said earlier. Um, to do a do-over. And that is they're requiring us to again hold a discussion of the same topics. That you discussed at that May twelfth meeting, including revoting any votes taken at a properly posted fu- future meeting, which is tonight. We had thirty days to to do this and send them back a letter. As you know, I've drafted up a response for the town administrator. To send over to the A G. Uh, but uh what we'll need to do tonight is we'll need to go back through and. I I guess recreate as best we can the uh the the meeting that you held back on May twelfth. I'm sure that you have meeting minutes because I think you just uh approved them. So you can certainly go through there and take whatever votes you had taken. Um, this is retrospective and looking backwards because we're trying to recreate. I think that a lot of of ground has been plowed since then. I think that a lot of of ground has been plowed since then. For example, we no longer have the emergency authorization. Now we have full authorizations for at least Moderna, I think all three, Moderna, Johnson and Johnson and the Pfizer. Um so we're going to have to kind of uh uh act like we we were discussing what happened back in May. And the and the status of what was going on there, and of course, um take the vote that you took that you took uh during that meeting.
Okay. So this is not a new discussion, we're simply replaying what happened in May.
I I think that that's that that is correct, yep.
That doesn't seem to meet the open meeting law of telling people what's going on. And giving them a chance to be at an open meeting and have a conversation.
Well, w- we we are, we're trying to, we're trying to write what they they said was a wrong. Um I I think that we've drafted the agenda items such that it is wide open. Um so you know, I'm saying that you can't this, that I'm not saying you can't discuss present day. But what I am saying is what the AG is requiring us to discuss is what happened back on May twelfth and revoke those particular votes.
Okay, so we need to go down this list here. Um so the reason this came up initially was that there was uh some employees that had come to me. That were concerned about uh mandatory vaccinations at the time. Um one of the first things we talked about was mandatory vaccination for participation at the senior center. I think at the time, and Jane, you can correct me if I was wrong, um we were requiring those with uh proof of vaccine. To uh participate in some of the physical fitness activities that were occurring there. I think that was what happened.
That's correct. Kaylee is also here if you would like to hear from her.
Okay. And uh so as part of that discussion, um you know, things had opened back up at the, kinda opened back up at the time. And I believe what we had said was that uh, well, the vote in the end was that we were not gonna require vaccines. In order to access, you know, the senior center, town buildings, et cetera.
But if the concern was employees accessing the senior center during recreational programming hours. We don't know any employees who really do that.
No, we don't. It was employees and also residents that had the issue.
Okay, but that's not what you said.
I think that, I think I'd like to clarify that because we did have concern about um fire or police. Accessing um some of the programs that we had at the senior center. And the requirements of them being vaccinated to come into the center. I think some of that uh came from that. If, is that correct David?
Yeah, that is correct. There was uh, I guess, someone was asked, a police officer was asked for a vaccination card, I believe. Or asked about their vaccine status, which they felt very uncomfortable with at the time, and it was brought to our attention. Uh it was for, I believe, coffee with a cop or one of those programs that occur at the senior center, and that was a part of the concern.
And I think that's where where it came from Jane, is that um our our employees of the town. Were asked to produce um their vaccination cards or their vaccination uh whatever. They needed to actually enter the senior center. And I think that's where all of this came about, that we felt uncomfortable um asking our town employees. To produce any type of vaccination cards or whatever, if they were masking and going into that and doing proper. Uh uh safety uh with their masks and things of that nature. Then we felt that it was alright for them to enter any public building, as in any individual that lived in town. And I think, I think that's where we all got a miss on things about um our public buildings. And our public employees and our town employees and how we felt about them being totally vaccinated. And you know, we were talking about that um at that time.
So going down the list here, um number two, requiring COVID nineteen vaccines. Uh that was one of the topics of discussion for uh whether or not we're gonna require COVID nineteen vaccines for the public. In order to access, say, town hall, the senior center, the enter the lobby of the police station, et cetera. Um. That policy says that uh there would be basically no discrimination between vaccinated and unvaccinated. And uh that frankly, we don't people's personal health issues. Uh rather just follow CDC guidelines. If a mask is required, wear the mask and uh go from there. Select board's role in setting health policy and state and federal guidelines. Um the, kinda think back to this. So as we know, the Board of Health has a order currently in place for indoor mask use. A mandatory indoor mask use within town and public places, uh you know, stores, town buildings, et cetera. Um so they have the ability to set that um requirement. Uh the select board sets the policy for accessing town buildings. As you know, a- as far as administratively, what our policies are.
And and David, that's whether or not you've been vaccinated or not, that a ma- mask mandate is in place.
Correct, yep, it has been currently, and Dr. Mulzer can correct me, but it's being renewed every, or looked at every thirty days, whether or not to renew it. I think September twenty-fifth was the last time it was renewed, so it'll probably be coming up for reexamination soon. Um number four, emergency authorization status of currently available COVID nineteen vaccines. Obviously, that's changed. But um we're looking back here, at the time when we had this discussion, uh there was nothing that was fully approved. Which was one of the topics that was discussed um at the time. And there were, that was one of the issues with some of the employees, was they were not willing to take something that they considered to be um experimental at the time. Um and please jump in if there is anything more to that discussion that, or in any of these items that I'm missing here. And Jeff, how am I doing so far? Am I hitting what I kinda need to hit?
I think you are, yes.
Uh prevalence of asymptomatic spread, I believe one of the conversation topics of that night was. Um that the mandating vaccines or people having vaccines was very important. Because uh you know, you could be feeling great, not showing any outward signs of COVID. But you know, if you went into the to the senior center to do some physical fitness activity, you could be spreading it to everybody in there uh without your knowledge. Um so that was one of the reasons for, I believe, those were that were in favor of mandating vaccines. Or asking about vaccine status at the time. Uh number six, potential for discriminatory policy. This was, if I remember, one of the the longer discussions of how do you tell a a taxpayer? That's paying for a senior center or a library or um you know, taxes in town. That they can't go into town hall to pay their water bill or can't go take out a book out of the library based on their vaccine status. Um we talked about that a little bit. Um Joyce, what else am I missing on that one? I I thought we talked more about that one, but.
I I I think we actually said that the, even if people were going in to go into any public buildings or town halls. That everybody is mandated, whether or not they're vaccinated, to wear masks. Um and it just makes everybody feel safe or whatever that they need to do. Um and then that's just what we require. And again, uh our Board of Health now has come out and has mandated that everybody wear a mask when they go into any public buildings. Whether or not you are vaccinated, because of, as right now, and I think um Dr. Mosley, you can back me up on this. Is that uh whether or not that you're vaccinated, you can still come down with COVID. And it has been proven that people, even with vaccination, have developed COVID. It's not a hundred percent guarantee, so that we do require that people still mask and be cautious. And and use some type of precautions. Um so that's why we uh feel that, you know, following the CDC guidelines is as important. Uh now as it was back in May twelfth, which is uh we've had a resurgence in September. So from May until September, we've had a resurgence. And so this is why we mandated it back then, and now we are mandating it, I think still now. But um that's what um is is our Board of Health has uh instituted this policy of wearing a mask. Going into any public building, so um that's what we did back in in May.
It's setting the record straight, in May, people at the senior center who had been vaccinated were not wearing masks.
Yeah, no Jane, I think you're right, because that was at the time when the governor dropped the statewide mask requirements, right? Right around that time, and things were kind of, everyone thought, oh, it's, everything's great, and we can go back to whatever.
But if you were not vaccinated, you were required to wear a mask.
Yes, but that wasn't an issue at the senior center, because at that point, people who came to the senior center had been vaccinated. So they were not wearing masks, making it much easier for people with auditory difficulties to communicate. People who have senior issues about breathing, able to breathe better without wearing a mask, I can attest to that. Um you know, there were a lot of different things that it was an advantage to the seniors to be in a protected area.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and and from the past conversation to the present conversation. Uh since they started testing the people with uh the va- the vaccinated people. I believe the state of Massachusetts is up to almost thirty thousand now. I'm guessing that have found out that they are vaccinated and they do have COVID. And th- this is why the mask mandate came back into place for everyone presently.
Yep. So that was asymptoma- asymptomatic spread.
Yeah.
That was discriminatory policy, I believe. That's what we're talking about. Uh privacy and HIPAA. Maintaining copies of resident or employee medical records, such as vaccine cards. Um anything along those lines. What the policy said was we weren't going to require proof of that vaccine or maintain those records. Because uh at the time, I said we didn't want that responsibility as far as, you know, complying with HIPAA. You know, keeping copies of people's medical records.
And not everybody that has access to people's records has taken the HIPAA. Um. Um protocol that we have to take with the state um in doing our uh ethics uh commission. Or ethics um questionnaire, whatever we do each year. So everybody that has uh access to that is not on that um protocol that we are.
If you're talking about volunteers at the senior center, they have all taken the ethics training.
Mm-hmm.
No, I I think she's talking about the HIPAA training as far as how to store and handle and protect um.
Mm-hmm. And I've taken that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I have to take it every, uh as a matter of fact, I just did it today with with MG. Um I have to do that every year.
Okay. Um public access to town property, meetings or events based upon vaccine status. And requesting medical documentation of vaccine status. We kinda touched on this in some of the other uh items. But uh one of the concerns again was if someone's a taxpayer in town and they want to go to some event that's being held. They wanna go to a, you know, a soccer game, they wanna go to something along those lines. Uh you know, they're paying taxes, how can you tell them they cannot participate based on their personal health condition?
The same way you can tell someone if they have something like obvious measles, mumps, hooping cough. That you don't go in public places.
Well, you're you don't go to a public school. You know, childhood, the vaccinations are required to go to school, public school.
Wasn't there a part of this conversation that was, do you require people to also get the uh flu vaccine?
Correct.
Wasn't that, that was also part of the conversation?
Yep, you're right, and uh the town does not require anybody to get a flu vaccine. Um to this day, we still don't require that, as far as I know.
Like we require diseases, but not viruses.
It it's, it's not a matter of diseases versus bacterial versus viral infection. It's um uh measles, mumps, rubiola, uh you know, highly contagious diseases. That have significant impact.
Right, hooping, hooping cough.
On on pub- on public health. Uh influenza virus has a different virulence, a different disease course. Um you know, we have what, maybe thirty thousand people a year usually die uh uh the flu virus. So it's um, it's it's in a different category, but it's not based on its uh whether it's a virus or a bacteria. It's it's about its its virulence, how sick it makes people. Mm-hmm. People die from flu just as well they die from COVID and being a. Well, they they do, they do Joyce, but on the average, thirty thousand people a year die from influenza. And we've already had, you know, seven hundred thousand deaths from COVID now. Yeah, I I I I I know the numbers are totally an extreme. But I just wanna say, over the years before we had gotten COVID, um or come into this COVID thing. That we're dealing with right now is that people did die from flu. Um and that, you know, it was up to people whether or not they wanted to get the flu shot. I, as an employee of MGH, I am mandated to get flu and COVID. So there is no question about whether I have to, but as part of my employment, I have to do that because I'm in healthcare. Now, other people that are not in healthcare but are in the community, then they're not being mandated necessarily. To get COVID or flu um at this time. Well, well, they are in fact.
Yeah, all state employees.
There's federal mandates now, all the airlines, I mean, that's, that's not true Joyce.
And all the state employees.
Well, I'm talking about towns. There's only one town within all of the three hundred and fifty-one uh cities and towns. That we uh the state has, that only Worthington has mandated that their town employees get the COVID vaccine. No other place has mandated um for their employees to get the vaccine.
But I feel like we're getting a little bit off topic, since we're trying to revert back to May when nothing was.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, no, I mean, I just, I'm not really sure how much more conversation needs to go on. Because all we're gonna do is just be sitting here and saying, well, since May, dot, dot, dot. Well, we're going back to May, let's go back to May, when nothing was approved, nothing was, you know, anything. And what we were going by back in May was none of these, these shots are all experimental.
Yeah.
We don't know what's gonna happen to people. We don't know who's gonna die from the vaccine. We don't know if the vaccine is effective. We don't know if people that got the vaccine should have to wear masks or not wear masks. Or everyone wear masks, like that, that back in May, that's where we were. So I think we should take a vote on back in May, and then moving forward, maybe something different. But I think right now, all we're doing is wasting everybody's time that's taking the time to be here right now.
Exactly, that that's my last question in the present. How much is this complaint costing us in litigation right now? Do we have an idea of how much Caroline? Are we four thousand, five thousand, ten thousand?
You're making jokes.
John, John, I I'd just like to say that um I I think the issue with this vote. That was taken back in May was uh the lack of transparency to the to the the residents of Hadley. Um you know, everybody's, everybody's got their opinion, people wanna be heard, people wanna be listened to. And they want some type of forum and some type of dialogue. So I don't know that it's.
Taxpayer, and I just asked a question, I'd like an answer to it.
Well, I I don't know that Caroline can give you that that number here, obviously. There's uh KP Law's time, Jeff's time as far as responding to the uh open meeting violation complaint. Um his time for being here tonight, although he's gonna be here for other items and executive anyways. But um we are paying for his time this evening and for. We are paying for his time this evening and for him or somebody on his staff to draft the uh response to the AG. So there there are costs associated with it, but um I don't think we should put Caroline on the spot to just have that number right now.
I don't have the exact number, but I I I I can tell you, John, it's it's um closer to your four thousand mark.
All right, thanks.
Can we advance this conversation at all? I. I would really like to touch back on Michelle Morris Friedman's request that there be some kind of posted public conversation. To go over this in detail and not sort of satisfy the letter of the law um with a last item and a long meeting. And and but really get somewhere with with a conversation that invites public input.
So we have a public uh comment session every um every meeting that's posted. Uh Michelle and Andy were the only ones that showed up for this evening despite this being posted and despite the newspaper covering it, et cetera, et cetera. Um so we we provide that opportunity for people to comment and make their feelings heard. Uh we have not posted a public forum, so to speak, or a public wh- whatever topic. Uh just as we don't post a public uh policy uh public forum for every topic that the select board votes on. Because if that was the case, then nothing would 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 ever be done in town, um this is.
I disagree, I disagree that that would not be effective and that nothing would be done if you permitted that level of discourse.
Um okay, but this is a select board conversation, um so. I just ask that you be respectful and uh let the select board have the conversation right now, okay?
The 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 people want to be listened to. David, you know, people want to hear have their voice and um. You know, I I think we could work towards that.
Uh I I'm more than happy to have a conversation where people, this is. Um certainly has been a very difficult time right now with covid and everything and trying to get. Uh people to have conversations and everything, and I'm I'm all about people participating in whatever conversation that we have and. Um not having them be able to be at our meetings or whatever, um it has not. Been kind of fruitful at times, um so maybe at some point, you know, having a different conversation. Um right now, we're trying to rectify the AG's um thing that he wants us to do for. Rectifying our meeting from May twelfth, uh and going forward, we can actually have. Maybe a different conversation of what we need to do, because right now this covid ain't going away. So we need still to to have some type of conversation on how we're going to deal with. The public and um uh inside activities and things like that, because we're coming upon winter. So, you know, kind of let's um get through this tonight, see if we can arrange something where. Uh we can have more conversation on the covid business, because it is a whole conversation that. I certainly think more people and uh us want to participate in, so. Uh let's get through what we need to do to tonight and then, you know, set up something that we can do. Uh more for the covid conversation with Board of Health and and the Select Board and seniors and whoever else wants to participate.
So I hear you saying that tonight we're not doing anything except what we did in last May, but we should. It would be useful to have a future conversation about covid and where the town stands and what its policies ought to be. Okay, so I move, we get this on a future agenda for a current. Um discussion of covid and policies around town.
I don't think we can make a new motion, because I think we're still stuck back in May twelfth currently.
I think. We made a motion.
I think we're we're asking that a future meeting be held. For covid and town buildings or meetings and how we want to proceed. Uh toward the future and maybe within the next month or so, we may have a better idea. Of where we are at with this covid situation and what we need to do. Agreed?
Yeah, do we have a motion on the floor, David?
No.
Okay, I make a motion, we put this on a agenda in the next three meetings.
Sounds like a plan, let's just do it and get it done, if we have to take up most of the meeting for that, then. Let's go for it, let's um get through town meeting. We have a last meeting in October, let's put this on one of the first agendas in November, how's that sound?
Excuse me, can I just ask for clarification, so we don't get into the same situation we had before? If if we can work on a uh a detailed uh agenda item from that for that. I don't want, I just don't want to get in this situation again.
No, I mean, like, do we need to make a motion to do that now?
Yeah, James, can I ask that you would just withdraw that until we finish up the the rehash of the May twelfth? And then we can, we I'm I'm happy to talk about that as soon as we do what we need for the AGs, just so we don't get uh confused here and that we. Can can talk in depth about what we need to talk about at a few at an upcoming meeting, is that is that.
Okay, no problem. Withdrawn.
All right, tha- thanks. All right, uh requiring town employees to be vaccinated, number nine. Again, going back to um employees, uh I know we have most employees vaccinated, I know there are some that's not. And that's their choice or their medical reason, whatever, but um. We've, I've also had uh several of those employees come to me that said that they will uh no longer work here. Um and this is back going back in May, that they were, they would no longer work here if they were mandated to uh to do that. So that was one of the concerns at the time, that we want people that are good at their jobs and do what they do and not, you know, being forced out. Over that, so that was one of the concerns at the time.
Following CDC guidelines, we are not in a position at this point. To mandate any public employee to be fully vaccinated, they still do have to follow CDC guidelines. Um uh in masking and doing whatever else, but I am not in a position right now that I would approve. Um all town employees to be vaccinated.
We're talk, we're talking May twelfth, we're not talking now.
I know, not now and she wasn't then.
I I'm talking about what I said back in May.
Add me to that list.
I I I am saying back in May, then that's what I had said, that I don't agree with people, we. Infringing on people to be mandated to be vaccinated, if they do not feel comfortable being vaccinated. But they still have to follow the CDC guidelines of being masking and doing whatever they need. Uh to protect themselves and other people from uh the covid. And I believe that's what I said even back then.
John, you were you were saying something? Did Joyce cover it?
Yeah, I mean, I I feel the same way I felt back in May, at this point, I I don't want to put any more restrictions on any of our employees. At all, we're gonna lose firemen and policemen and.
John, back in May, bay, may.
Yes. Lose our employees because they don't want to get vaccinated, that's a pretty pissed poor waiter on a business, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, we're not mandated right now, it's not a, it's not a statewide federal thing.
Okay, so then I will make a motion, can I make a motion then?
Go for it, Amy.
Amy, we gotta cover two more bullet points, so if it's a motion to keep what we have, we gotta talk about them, but if it's something else, go ahead.
No, no, finish, please.
Just gotta hit all the all the items here as required, uh ten vaccination status and individuals holding an elected or appointed position in town. Uh at the time, the discussion was if someone's in elected office and they have not received the vaccine. Uh and we were to mandate they needed a vaccine to come into town hall, wouldn't that be basically cancelling out their vote? Uh the the residents uh vote by not allowing them to conduct their their duties or to do their job. Because they would no longer be able to be in those buildings, uh same with anybody that's appointed to committees, boards, et cetera. So that was, that was one of the topics of conversation at the time. And eleven maintenance of medical records such as vaccination records and. I'm by no means an expert on this, I'm sure Joyce can speak to this, but there's certain ways things have to be maintained, even if it is shot records and other. Information that I we didn't want to get into at the time.
Correct.
Okay.
That's that's HIPAA, that's private, you don't need to share it.
All right, uh Jeff, did I, do you feel everything was was covered sufficiently, is there anything else that we need to do as far as that goes?
Uh I think you covered everything and and I guess the only thing you have to do is is vote, but I I think we need to distinguish, I I don't know if. Are there any more policies that you voted on since then?
No, this was the last one pertaining to covid, I believe.
So is the original motion that we had back on uh May twelfth still in the minute, can you read that?
Yes, let me pull it up, it is, it's kind of long, but I'll read it. Uh is number one, it is the town of Hadley's policy that the public shall not be denied access to town buildings, facilities, property or events. Based upon vaccine status unless unless otherwise required by law. Town of Hadley recognizes that medical decisions such as vaccine are personal choice and will not require town employees to be vaccinated as a condition of employment. Just as we do not require flu shots or other vaccines in order to work for the town. No employees shall be denied access to any public building, facility or property based upon vaccine vaccine status. Number three, public access to government is critical and no person shall be denied access to in-person public meetings based upon their vaccine status. Unless required by law. Number four, town of Hadley shall not require medical documentation to be submitted to the town regarding vaccine status. In order to participate in any public event, posted meeting, entry into town building or use of town property unless otherwise required by law. Number five, the town of Hadley shall not maintain copies of medical records such as vaccination records unless otherwise required by law. Vaccine status shall not have any impact on an individual holding an elected or appointed position for the town of Hadley. The town of Hadley and its employees, contractors and elected officials shall not ask for or consider vaccine. Or other medical conditions when making an appointment or hiring decision unless otherwise authorized by law.
Thank you for your motion, Mr. Chairman, can I please second that?
No, you gotta make the motion.
God damn. Can I, can I do that? Can I just say so moved? So I moved, second.
Uh all right, motion by Amy, I need a second.
Second.
Second by John, all right, any other discussion, I'm repassing this. All right, Jeff, we good to take a vote on this, do you think?
I think you are, yes.
All right, all right, Jennifer, roll call.
Roll call vote, Phil. Nevin Smith.
No.
Chungalo.
Yes.
Muskevitz.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and then Jane. Jane, you wanted to talk about putting this on an upcoming meeting.
I don't know if we need a motion, but I feel strongly we should put this on a upcoming meeting that doesn't have a lot of other stuff going on.
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to put it on there, uh on the the agenda. Um I'll talk with Carolyn about what we have coming up, the next couple of meetings after town meeting, hopefully it'll be a little quieter than what we've had, so I'm sure we can devote some time.
David, I would request that at at that meeting that um we not limit public comments to fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
So, you know, whoever wants to speak and, you know, let people have their voice.
Yeah, we can, we can, I'm sure, post it as a public forum on the topic, I guess that would what be what it would have to be posted at, right?
That'd be great, that sounds like a plan.
And and what is the agenda item exactly?
Covid.
More specific than that, yeah. You want to save some money, you gotta be more specific than that.
How about covid nineteen policies for the town, is that more specific?
It's not. No, it sounds like it's a a vaccine status conversation.
Well, I'll let Jeff come up with a good. Encompassing top agenda item for us that will satisfy the requirement.
Yeah, I'm happy to work with Carolyn and and Jennifer on that.
Carolyn, say something.
No, I I'm fine, I I just before we decide on this, I just need um a little bit more guidance about, um are you. Are you requesting, are, is it gonna be a bit, just the vaccine, a vaccine mandate? Is that what the agenda is gonna be?
I think it's a vaccine, um how we deal with it within townwide.
Vaccine protocol for the town of Hadley, how's that?
That sounds good, John.
John, that's excellent.
Attaboy.
Thank you for your contribution.
John does does good work when he's been working hard all day long.
Jeff, that's a good, that's a good uh explanation, that's adequate.
I I think so, if we looked at the AG's letter at the end there, they did say, I mean. You you you, I I think a policy discussion regarding covid nineteen. Um vaccination policy or or just policy uh for the town. I think it gives everybody um in town uh a heads up of what we're gonna be discussing.
Are are we able to like limit it to just vaccine versus non-vaccine, or I mean, because I feel like. When you start talking about covid nineteen, you get a lot of um like sidebar conversations.
I think Amy, you have to take in both retrospects, because there are people in town that don't want to be vaccinated. Um and some people have had been vaccinated, they've had not a good outcome from vaccination. And they don't feel like they need to do the booster, um so there are, you know, a lot of things. Uh encompassing all of this um. And I think we have to be respectful of people's um whys and why nots.
No, no, I just meant like, we're not gonna be talking about like masks and stuff, because the mask and everything is state mandated.
Correct, okay, and then individually, it's mandated by town to town or.
The mask is not state mandated, the mask is mandated by the Hadley Board of Health.
And tha- that's what I just said.
That's not something that we need to talk about since that's.
Yeah, it was actually recommended by the CDC, so.
But again, that's a good discussion for all of us to do.
All right.
And Carolyn, let's try to get word out to people, so people, you know, know that they have this opportunity to speak up.
Sounds good.
That's what we try to do with every meeting. That's why we have public comments every meeting.
At the MA.org, click on the calendar, you can find every agenda for every board committee, everything you would.
I know, I don't know why people don't utilize it more, but.
Not our fault that they don't.
Yeah, Jennifer, frustrated, she does all that work and no one looks at it, she says.
It's easier to just complain, you know?
And it's it's easy too, before we all had to go somewhere and dealing with work, and now you can do it from anywhere, so it makes it a heck of a lot easier, but um.
We all want, we all want to just work together and and do what's best, because this thing isn't going away quick enough.
Right. Okay, so I have the last, uh actually, any announcements before executive session? Uh we're adding meeting on what day, to be sure, Jennifer, Carolyn, next Wednesday?
No, we are adding October twenty seventh, because. Yes, that'll give us time for the procurement for the streetlights forever source, which is what the specific of that meeting.
Uh we will try not to have a lot of topics, because I will be on vacation, but I'll be at the meeting, but we're gonna try to keep it a small. Agenda, so anything that can wait till the following select board meeting would be awesome.
Okay. Um any other announcements?
I I have just a couple. Um my sad part of my always agenda is that um Shelley Quinlan has lost her grandmother. So we send our condolences to Shelley. And Cindy Kisa lost her brother Stan Sadowski, and we send our condolences to Cindy. Um from the Select Board, so um. Much love and appreciation to all of you with your your family, thank you. Uh we also have kind of a good thing here, we have. Thank you. Uh, we also have kind of a good thing here. We have uh an Emmy award. So we have the Anellos who moved to Hadley in the eighties. Uh, his dad owned Pinocchio's and the Monkey Bar. All three children went through the Hadley schools. Lucia was the oldest, Hopkins class of oh one through the spent. Uh, she spent the last year or two at HCC to allow time for her tennis competitions. She went to Columbia University tennis team, and from there, apparently she went on to the entertainment field and eventually found comic success and has just two to three weeks ago won two Emmys for her writing and directing the HBO comedy Hacks. So starring Jean Smart, who also won an Emmy, an Emm- Emmy for the show. I loved her as Charlene in The Designing Woman years ago. So uh much success to her and thank you for bringing a little bit extra light to Hadley. Thank you.
Absolutely. An Emmy award winner from town, halfway?
Yeah, imagine that. Great, huh? Not just sports.
Last call for announcements before we go to through the executive session stuff.
Molly's got her hand up.
Uh, well, we're not doing public comments and Molly was here during public comments, so we'll, we'll, she can jump on for public comments next time around. Um, all right, ten point one, executive session. The Select Board will enter into emergency executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A three to discuss litigation regarding the matter of Veronimus Peter, or Peter Veronimus versus Town of Hadley, where discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position, and the chair so declares. And so motion by Joyce, I need a second.
Second.
Second by John. And uh as Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the Board has moved and seconded to enter the executive session. And then I state that discussing the matter in open session will have an adverse effect on the town and town of Hadley, and we will not reconvene in open session. Um, so I need a roll.
Roll call, Phil. Nevin Smith.
Yes.
Changelo.
Yes.
Muskevitz.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yeah.
Thank you.